It's now 6:30. I want to welcome all board members and our guests. And all board members are present, so we will now stand. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Come on in. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll start off by approving the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? Take a motion to approve. Bye Mahoney.
I'll second it.
And a prowl.
Move by Mahoney, second by Pearl to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? Right now, no favors, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side. Motion clear.
Next, we'll ask if there are any conflict of interest or disclosures and waivers requests. And I haven't seen any filed. And hearing none. We'll move on. We'll open it up for any correspondence or public commentary. Have you contacted it, Alshay?
No.
No? All right. Item seven is information, our discussion items. We'll discover, we'll discuss the face covering mandate. And I'll let our superintendent Shane McIntosh take the floor.
So, two items on the agenda tonight, and they're interrelated. The first one is requirement of face coverings. Now, it's something we've not required yet. We require them during passing times and on busing. Other than that, they're not required of the students anymore. If you've been noticing the numbers lately, and I'm talking about statewide and countywide, they're really beginning to creep up on us. And we've experienced our first positive cases in the last two weeks. So, knowing I wanted to talk to you about the quarantine rules, I thought this was probably an opportune, opportune time to also bring forth the discussion about mask mandate. There are a number of area schools that do require it. So, I thought I'd put it on the table and see what you guys were thinking about that. I think it's an appropriate time for the board to consider that. I do know that when we first started this whole process, a vast majority of the public was really not in favor. It was about 75% I believe that preferred that we not mandate masks. But that's been eight weeks ago. Well, it's even been longer than that. We've been in school for eight weeks. So, it's probably closer to 16 weeks when the survey was taken. And a lot of things have changed since then. So, I think the science shows that masks do help prevent spread. And I know that if we can do our part, I think you should, so.
Are we still going to stay with the same green, yellow, orange?
We will. That will change a little bit in the, in the fact that, you know, mask mandate would come later. If there was spread, obviously, we wear masks already. So, that wouldn't pertain, but hopefully, we'd never get there if we're wearing masks. I think to date, we've had three high school students test positive. So, you know, it's still not, not a lot, but it's starting, I think. And then just two staff, and two staff, yes.
Do you want to open the floor for discussion?
Yeah, I think, I think somebody from Abera wanted to speak.
I'm Lindsay Webber, one of the nurse practitioners out of Abera. I'm just, we're just kind of here to give you guys a little bit of an update of what we're seeing around the community and at our facility. We've definitely seen, like Mr. McIntosh was saying, an uptick in cases over the last, I'm sure, three weeks, but more specific, the last two weeks, I would say. There's now some stanchions from our county. Clinically, what we're seeing is that people who are coming in now are, I would say, in general, sicker than what we were seeing, you know, even a month ago. The other thing that's really, you know, profound, I guess, is in August, we had a 10% positivity rate. And the month of September, our rate jumped to 24.6%, just at our facility. Meaning, we tested 207 people, and 51 of those people were positive. So, that's very concerning. I guess I'll kind of let, will you just speak to some of the workforce issues or something?
Yeah, so, you know, we're beginning to see any impact in our workforce. We, I think as of today, I had 13 employees out of work. Some of them are, were positive, but some of them were simply exposed to somebody positive. So, I have 13 bodies that are not able to be at work. So, that's pretty significant. You guys can relate to that, obviously, from your workforce issues too. And, you know, I think some of the things that we're worried about is, is if school, if school ends up having to be remote, that we're going to have some of our employees who are going to need to be home with their kids. So, we're going to have further impact with, with workforce. Long-term care, because of the county positivity rate, the feds mandated all nursing homes in the country to start testing, doing routine testing on all of our staff. We have been doing surveillance testing for weeks and months, where we tested one resident and two staff members, kind of like you guys are doing here at school. And then with the positivity rate going up, we had to begin testing our employees two times a week. And last week, we had our first asymptomatic positive employee. So, then that threw us into outbreak testing. And so, now we're having to test, we started today, actually, was our first round of outbreak testing. We have to test all of the nursing home residents and all of the staff. When we were doing routine testing, staff members could opt out, or they weren't required. But if they opt out now, it's, they're not able to work. So, it begins a process of corrective action. The impact to the, just to the lifestyle for the residents has been obviously severely impacted. We can't have visitors now in the facility at all. We've been trying to do outdoor visits, and we're going to continue that as long as we can. But it's October, and it's not going to be this nice for very much longer. And so, outside visits are going to, you know, be, become an issue. So, we just feel like there's lots of issues throughout the community. Impact all of us. And so, we wanted to come tonight, kind of give you guys an overview and lay of the land of what we're seeing, and support and be a resource to you guys answering your questions. And I think Dr. Berent, do you guys all know Dr. Berent? He's our newest physician.
Yeah, I'm Paul Berent, one of the new providers there. I mumble at baseline, so if I mumble more than that, just tell me to speak up from the back. But, I mean, I would echo everything Lindsay Marie I've said so far. The hard part with COVID is it's been a moving target. This is a new disease process. You know, stuff that came out, recommendations, months ago are changing. You know, most things that we're trying to treat have been around for years, not six to seven months. So, I understand that that makes, you know, policies and things like this difficult, because we're always changing, recommendations are always changing. But one thing that has shown to reduce transmission and rescue masking. Is that easy? No. I don't like masking myself all day. We all kind of grumble about it ourselves. I know with students that that's a hard target to hit. But it risks exposures for yourself, so your risk of transmitting goes down. Your risk of, you know, if you have a positive student in classroom, the other student's having to quarantine goes down. The tentacles of that go out further, you know, our positivity, your health. Because I have a patient today that's 87 and can't visit his wife in the nursing home. And that's having substantial, you know, mood problems for her, and she's near her quality of life. And, you know, a lot of that stuff, you just don't think about it face value. It's easy to kind of look the other way early on when everything's in New York and these bigger cities. But it is here, and it's going to be here a while. So, from our standpoint, you know, all the little things we can do to kind of keep students at school, keep teachers and students safe, keep the community safe, if it's an action that we can take to do those things. As a medical facility, you understand why they're doing that.
Great. Thank you.
I guess the only thing I would like to say on the masking part is my question would be, if the mask mandate has gone forth with, would it, could it be, or would it be different for elementary, junior high, or a school? Now, I know that we are a school and junior high are set up. It would be very hard to separate that, because they are in the halls and in the spaces together. But we have had no cases in the elementary yet. So, to go forth with a policy that would really, you know, in the beginning, I thought it was kind of said, if something changes. On the elementary side, I think that things changes for students. So, that's just, you know, my opinion as far as.
Thank you.
Maybe each needs to be considered separately, because then again, we have entities of all or all of the colonies too, that maybe each one would need to be looked at separately versus as a whole.
Thank you, Sharice. Thanks for coming. We always appreciate a parent's perspective and input. Are there any other comments on the floor?
My other comment would be his too, is I think we need to consider that we are cooperating with some of those schools for some of our outside activities that are non-mandating events.
Okay.
So, when we're mandating, but then we're bringing another school in for sports or things like that, we're also opening ourselves up to schools that are non-mandating. Which I know us masking ourselves, we cut down on some. But again, then our outside activities are bringing in more exposures.
With that being said, Shane, do you want to talk about some of the mask policies or that you're looking to put into place with this or exemptions?
I think we are largely two, correct me if I'm wrong. I know we considered a lot of different things at the beginning. But didn't we consider the elementary separately, junior high, high school way back? That was one thing.
Well, it was part of our discussion, but we did not separate it.
So, we do. We treat these buildings differently. So, for example, if a colony school has a bunch of cases, it doesn't affect the elementary. The high school cases didn't necessarily affect the elementary. An elementary case wouldn't necessarily, in terms of the moving progression. I see this as a little bit different in that we're trying to prevent any of that from happening versus trying to contain it. And the purpose of all of that was trying, we were trying to contain things. The classrooms, for example, you know, you take a first grade classroom, they really don't cross paths with any other students during the day, per se. But high school couldn't, can't really do that. So, we had that, we had those groups together, and we had everything designed to try to, try to do that. So, first of all, I guess the masks and what Sharice was saying, the outside activities, we do. We co-op with Ethan in cross-country right now. Those kids do come into the building typically at the beginning of practice, maybe. Other than that, they're usually outdoors together. And everything I've read, that's probably the safest place to be. The concern of things I've been reading lately is now that it's getting cooler outside, people are congregating inside more and more. And then with flu season and everything else, that's why I thought this might be the opportunity or the time to look at this, is because we're going to see that trend of more and more people coming indoors versus being out at our outdoor activities. I guess in terms of separating or treating the elementary and high school differently, I only talked to one elementary teacher today about this. And her feedback was, we already do it for the most part. There are times when they don't wear their masks. But anytime we're in groups, anytime we're together, they do that. So, her opinion was, she didn't think it was going to be much of a change for them. And she thought they would handle that fairly well. Now, that's just one teacher's opinion. Any other questions?
No, Shane, I've talked to probably a handful of parents, myself, on the subject with kids in the school. And I think that was the overall consensus as well, is that the kids have adapted extremely well to the masks in the school, much better than I think anyone expected them doing so. And so, I, I think if we moved, you know, to masking all the time, I don't think it would be, you know, as much of a concern as when we initially, you know, put this into place. The other side of it is the activities. You know, and Sharice kind of touched on that a little bit. And, and I'm not going to lie, I have a concern about that as well, you know? And I've had several parents bring that to my attention, that we do all of this work to mask our kids in the school, and we do everything we can. But then we allow them to go and participate in activities, and they're not masking. I mean, I just walked down the hall, and in that activity room, there was a bunch of kids standing right next to each other without masks on. Now, maybe that's that class. I assume it's an activity at this time of the night. But it would not do us any good if we're masking all day, only to turn around and not be masked when we're in groups. And so, my feeling is, is we really need to look at the activities. Now, I know statewide, through the Activities Association, there's not been any change in schools around the state putting a stop on activities and sports. So, that might be something, as this spreads a little bit more, you know, that they look at. But that is a concern of a lot of families. And it has been with kids being quarantined because they've been exposed, but yet we're still having, you know, these activities go on. So, there's other things, you know, that, you know, I think we're going to need to look at and that are being asked out in the public. So, I know I threw a couple of them in there, but.
I think there could be other people with questions. If you had a child with asthma or, or different conditions such as that, that would be a concern, I think, if I were a parent and my child had asthma. I, I did reach out to the Mitchell School District today and ask them some questions about their program and situations like that. And I'd give you this handout. You should have it there. And those were exceptions I thought we should, if this is something you want to move forward with, these would be exceptions where students wouldn't necessarily have to wear masks if they, they fit into any one of these categories. You know, asthma, you could easily probably get a doctor's note, I assume, for that. Who would say, maybe it's not the best interest of this child to wear a mask? Whatever else, they do not require it. This being Mitchell, outdoor recess, they do not require it. Cafeteria, obviously, when you're eating, they don't. But once they're done eating, they are required to put the masks back on. During outside PE, they're not. Inside PE, they're not. As long as it involves physical activity, that's not something physically, they require masks. Then there's the extracurricular portion. When they're in actual competition, they do not require it. But when they're on the bench, they do. So, if they're sitting idle, they require their, their student athletes to mask up.
What if they're standing idle?
Well, it's like, yeah.
I mean, no, I mean.
Like a football bench is standing, yeah.
But you're talking, you know, if you talk volleyball, I walk by the volleyball, they were standing out on the floor. I mean, you're going to have that as well during instruction on the court, where they're standing just as if they were sitting on the bench. And that's going to be really difficult to mask.
Well, I think there's got to be some, you know, I guess I'd say some common sense from a coach's perspective. If you've got them practicing, you bring them in for 30 seconds, then you're sending them back out. You can't really expect them to go get their masks, come and talk for 30 seconds, or they're not, I mean, it.
But we're talking common sense, but you know, we don't.
Well, you got to remember.
Not everybody has the same level of, or perspective on common sense when you're talking about the public and our parents and our community, because that's what we have to answer to.
That's true. But you got to remember that a close contact exposure is within six feet for 15 minutes.
Right.
And I guess I would expect our coaches to know if they're going to be huddling and grouping a lot, then, then they're going to have to make some changes on how they, they proceed, is how I would approach that. Now, Mr. Yost isn't here tonight. He's at the state golf meet with our team out there. So, I don't have his opinion on that. But I think that's something we'd certainly work with. And then other examples would be if a teacher's in their classroom by themselves, correcting papers on a prep period, they allow them not to wear their mask. Another change for us would be, coaches are required to wear masks. Our coaches haven't been wearing masks either. So, that would be something else we would look to implement. And again, it's all done for student safety. It's done for staff safety, and, you know, there's, there's no other reason behind it other than that. I suspect there will be some people who are unhappy. I don't know if this is a popular decision. But that's why you guys get paid so much.
All right. Are there any other comments before we, as a board, speak on it?
I guess I just feel again that we're jumping the gun. We don't have a reason to move to the next stage. And I don't want, you know, sickness on. I don't know. I guess it would be easier to swallow if maybe we knew that if so much of our population had it. But right now, we're talking three cases in the high school that have been contained. Because as of yet, and there's more to come, but as of yet, those quarantined kids have not shown any symptoms or tested positive. They're all back, as well as our one who's back from.
What do you see as the cons of wearing the masks?
The cons of wearing the masks is masking healthy kids.
Okay.
If my kids have no symptoms, then they have no reason to be wearing a mask. I don't see a reason to put a mask on.
What about other kids? You know, statistically, it's proven if, if both parties are wearing masks, that it's safer. So, we have some kids that have weakened immune systems or may have medical concerns. If we're masking everybody, the chances of them not getting COVID have been proven to be greater. Is that, I mean, that's.
And I think there's a huge, I mean, I don't want anybody to be sick.
Right.
Any child to be sick. Again, I don't feel that we have cause to go to this next step yet. And until we do, you know.
Right.
Use invasive is always better, you know.
Yeah.
Wait till we do need to go to that. And, you know, some of the studies have shown too, that our younger kids are not the targets. I mean, that's why maybe our teachers have been exposed, and, you know, we've had a couple of cases in teachers, and we've had a couple of cases in our upper high school, but not in our junior high, not in our elementary. So, again, I would urge you to consider that when you're considering mask mandate, do we want to start where the pieces are in the high school? And then if need, move to junior high, move to elementary.
Okay. Do we have individuals masked at activities? You know, so like if we have a volleyball match, and you've got all these people in the stadium, and you know how all your kids get together, you know, in one, that one corner, are they masking?
No. No. You'll have some mask in the crowd, but I'd say few.
I guess I would just add, just for you, my thoughts are is that when we started the school year, I was pretty, I was against maybe masking too. But as I'm thinking about some of the things that have happened over the last couple of weeks with kids having to be out and hearing all the challenges with online learning that have come up. And I want kids to be in school. And we know that if everybody has a mask on, they don't have to go home. And so, to me, it's like, well, why wouldn't we have them wear a mask? So, no one gets sent home unless you absolutely are sick. So, then it protects everybody in the building. I guess for me, I'd rather, for me, it's a give and take, because I want them to be in the classroom. And I want the teachers to have as many kids in front of them. Because I can't even imagine as a teacher trying to run, really essentially what they're doing is running two classrooms. They're having to run an online class, and at the drop of a hat. So, like, you come in Monday morning, and you might have four kids in this class, and four kids in this class, and two kids in this class, that all of a sudden, you have to adjust and get them their work, and get them what they need, and answer their emails, and they can't hear you. And then their testing is different, and they're, I mean, it's just kind of like, as a teacher, I can't even imagine. As a student, I've heard some of the students speak to me about it as well, how frustrating it's been, because the teachers are so busy, they're trying to get everybody what they need. And for me, you're right, a lot of those kids sat in quarantine, they wouldn't, I mean, none of them got sick. So, I'd rather they all had masks on and been able to stay in the school the whole time. And this way, they could. And that's what, to me, makes the most sense. Even if there's times where they don't have a mask on in activities, I mean, we, activities are good for kids. I want kids to still be able to do that. They're taking a risk. We all take risks every day. When you go to an activity, I suppose, and you're competing in football or volleyball or whatever, and don't have a mask on, but that's limited to that group too, so that feels a little better to me. I don't know. I wasn't a huge, I didn't want that. And the more I've seen the challenges that have come out of the last couple of weeks with pulling kids from school, I mean, I've just heard from a lot of the parents how challenging that was. We have a couple of people at work who've had kids pulled, and they can't work. So, I have nurses who are sitting at home when we have a nursing shortage, and they can't work. And they're like so upset, because they're having to use vacation, and it's frustrating for them. And I don't want that for our hospital. I don't want that for our community. Because when people are sick, we have to have nurses able to work, doctors able to see patients, teachers able to teach, so that everything keeps going. And I feel like, I guess I changed my mind. I don't know. I, you know, I think I've seen enough now to know, we didn't really know everything when we started the school year. I think it seems, everybody, you know, everybody seems to kind of be going in the same direction. Departmentments are changing standards. It just feels like the right thing to do. I don't know about younger versus older, but it certainly feels like to decrease risk. And I don't, I'm sure there are things that are downsides of wearing a mask. I know there are other, there are things. But we haven't seen those either, so I don't know.
Thanks, Jill. A lot of great points as well. Sharice, you had a lot of great points also. Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments I'd like to share?
You were right, I just talked a little bit about just pain and grandeur. So, I think your concerns are totally valid, especially if you look at a individual health care person. Kids are lower risk. We've seen that, you know? You don't see a lot of young kids getting super simple. The hard part is you kind of look at the technicals of all of this, and that's where it really gets to be tough. So, almost every, most children in school have siblings. So, their siblings are in other classes. You never know, you know, maybe the second graders or the third graders haven't had any system. If they personally got COVID, not even, you know, necessarily. What about their, you know, fifth grade brother that has cancer and is undergoing chemo? Or the grandma that came over for the birthday party next week and has diabetes and COPD? It's hard to contain that. And I think that's where it gets to be so tough. We, we start talking, you know, population-based health versus individual health. And I think no matter where you look, there's going to be people that are lower risk. And I think that's where it gets hard, you know, making these blanket statements that everyone should, you know, wear a mask and things like that. But it all kind of comes back to looking out for each other. You know, you're maybe not looking out for X, Y, or Z, but you're looking out for the person who's related or exposed to someone else, and trying to take care of those things. So, I, I hear your concerns, and I, I think they're all valid, and that's a good point. Turning the table, that's kind of where we're coming from when we're making our statement. It's not to limit rights. It's not to make it more difficult for parents or for teachers to try and enforce these things. It's trying to protect everyone, trying to get people so that they can enjoy their loved ones in health-saving ways, instead of not having to, you know? The other thing is, if you start talking about, you know, what is the threshold? That's where it gets super hard. What is your threshold? You know, is one grandparent of a second grader that passed away from COVID, is that the threshold? Is it, you know, three hospitalizations? There's no like clear boundaries on this stuff. And I think trying to be on the front end of things, maybe it seems like it's early. It seems like we're, you know, you don't think the gut are doing things. But I think anything with population health, with epidemics, you want to be on the forefront so that people are comfortable about it. You don't want to be the ones who waited too long and then say, well, we could have done this a month ago and saved three or four deaths, or, you know, saved 10 hospitalizations. And I think that's kind of where we come at from our standpoint. But it's hard. Anytime you make blanket statements, you know, it's not one size fits all. Everyone's trying to do the best they can, and their information they have, and so. I guess that's what I would have to add to your comments.
No, that's, that's great. We don't want any ducks linked to our school. That is absolutely for sure. Thank you, Doctor. All right. Any other comments? All right. So, I need to open the floor for, we've opened it for discussion. We need to take a motion on where. We need to take a motion on whether we are going to mandate face covering school-wide or not.
So school-wide, does that include our home and Palom's side as well?
Yes. And there's going to be unique challenges. Our home pretty much does it already. I mean, they, they, I'm not concerned. Palom's on the other hand, they have different philosophies and theories. And I, I think what it's going to take there is just working with them and constantly having conversations with them to have their children wear masks. And it could be a challenge to get them to regularly do that, but I think the goal is to keep working towards that goal. I don't think you want to throw a child out of school because his parents don't want him wearing masks. But on the other hand, I think we need to keep, that's the expectation we have of you. And I guess if it comes push to shove, then we'll have to decide what we want to do if somebody keeps refusing. But hopefully, we never have to do that.
Do we have TPPE change to?
We have, we have a lot of masks and they're fairly easy to get a hold of now if we need more. I know that the State Department of Health said they had cloth masks for us if we needed to order some more. But we've got a lot of masks on hand, I think, don't we Craig?
We've got some.
I mean, we've got, we've got a lot. So if anybody needs masks, we have them. Most have their own already. John, you got to remember, they're already bringing them for passing time, they're already bringing them for busing, so. Most kids have them already.
The one thing I would ask, I know when I brought up, I mean, we're kind of going by the green, yellow, orange condition. I mean, if we do decide to mandate toward the masks now, is there a point where we get back to maybe only recommending them? Or are we looking at this for the school year?
I, I don't.
Or for this mask?
I don't think it has to be for the school year, no. I think that the board should take a period of time and then reevaluate it at that point. And when that is, I, I don't know. You know, maybe, maybe our health professionals would have a better idea. But I think that, I think, you know, the success of a vaccine, when that actually gets to the general public, when it gets to the students, that's going to play a role. I mean, here, we could have as early as next month versus next summer. So I, I don't know if you know that, but I, I think it would be wise for the school board to set a time to, to reevaluate whether or not they want to continue with it. And maybe that time's semester time, I don't know. I, I agree with that.
I agree, it's going to really just depend on what's going on in society with this pandemic.
I know right now, I mean, there's getting to be more community spread and more spread in the, in the county. I mean, this makes sense to me and I don't have a problem with this. But I think if we do get to that point where we're back to more of a green condition, that we can back off.
Right.
So, well, I. Go ahead Jill.
I was just going to say, the other thing that I think is important to note is that we're like beckoning on flu season. And I think the challenge will be like people trying to determine, is this this, is this that? And I think we might see an unintended consequence by wearing a mask is that we'll have less flu, hopefully. That's the goal. And so to me, in my mind, as a nurse, I see it, you know, when, at the end of flu season, is really when you look to, is, are we, are we ready to change this, does this look different? Because I think no matter what we do, we're going to see a climb in that as well. It happens every year and it's going to happen again no matter what we do. But maybe this will be, help people stay healthier for the season, I don't know. I was just thinking about how sometimes, you know, you do something and it affects something you never expected. Thought, man, I bet you will, hopefully, we'll see flu go down if we're successful with masking and doing it the right way and kids are following the rules and all those things. Maybe we'll keep kids healthier and teachers and everybody in the community too, so I don't know.
Yeah, I definitely, you know, back to, you know, Jim, your initial question is, I, I don't, I don't think we implement this for the entire school year. I think it's going to be based on where we are statistically in our rate of COVID in this state. I know right now, we're like 22%, which is really high. You can't even go across the border to a lot of states any longer without being quarantined for two weeks. So as long as we're this high, we need to do everything we can. And we need to keep our kids in school, I mean, that's the, that's our ultimate goal. Parents don't want to be at home educating their kids and finding daycare. We all know that's a true issue right now. So if this one little thing can keep our kids in school and our community safer, then I think we have the responsibility to do it.
Yeah, I, I concur about it. I, I think we've had great discussion. I, I mean, quite frankly, beginning of the year, I was really ready to go full mask. And, and it was just because I want our school to educate kids. And when we educate kids, that means we're coming to school. I got four grandkids and they, they lost out, they go to Sioux Falls School System and.
Then they lost out already.
Yeah, I mean, they, last year, they got behind. I mean, and, and thank God to my wife, being a prior teacher, that helped considerably. But, but I sat down with the kids, they call me pops. And so we sat down with the kids and had a discussion about so far their school year. And they enjoy going to school, seeing their friends, and that's all part of the education process. And, and if we can continue to do that, and it means that we have to wear masks that are not comfortable overall. I, I talked to my four-year-old and he's a trooper. He, he'll, he wears the mask and he doesn't complain about it. In fact, all of them do. Because I think kids understand that if that's what they're supposed to do, I think they accept that, okay? I do. And so I think if we keep people healthy, that's what it's about. And if they're healthy, they can come to school, got to school, we have the education, it works.
Yep, and it goes in line, and I know I brought up the activities a little bit tonight because it does, every time anybody calls me, that's one of the things they bring up. You know, going to a volleyball match or a football game, being a spectator, that's an option. You don't, you don't have to go. You know, and if, if you don't want your kids or you as an adult to be around other people who aren't masking, then you eliminate yourself from those environments as much as you can. So, you know, I would encourage publicly, anyone who's listening, to wear a mask in public, especially right now with the state rate the way it is. And if you don't want to be around, especially right now as we continue with activities, if people are choosing not to mask, then maybe watch it from TV or maybe skip that activity. And that really goes in line with your children. You know, if you don't want them to be exposed, that's a discussion you need to have with them if they are going to opt in to participate in an activity where they may not be masking.
Have you heard anything from the teaching staff itself about the mask in general with the kids or any type of?
No, just that one teacher I spoke to today about it, John. I'll, I'll be honest with you. Again, I, I originally started working on the, the student quarantine issue. I recognize that was an issue, we had kids sitting out of school. I don't know that a single child who was placed into quarantine was ever tested as positive. So to me, it seemed like that was, needed to be adjusted somehow.
Sure.
But going back to what the good doctor said was, when is the right time? Now, right now, there's only one person's shoulders that's leaning on, that's mine. So I come to school every day wondering, should we be doing more? I mean, who, whose responsibility is decide, and it's been mine. So that's when I decided, I'm going to put this on the agenda and we're going to talk about it. Because I don't, I don't want to be the only one thinking about that. And that's, that's a lot of responsibility when you start thinking about all of the students and then, then you start to talk about families and extended families. And it's, it's overwhelming, so. I would like to, I would like to follow up just on Jim's. So we've got that progression, the green, yellow, one, that's, that's still not going to go away. Hopefully, what happens though is by masking, we don't move across it. Because we're just not seeing, seeing the number of cases there. And, and you're absolutely right, one thing that we, we heard two things early. I said 75%, you know, back in, back in the summer, 75% really didn't want their kids wearing masks. But I think it was about 90-some percent didn't want their kids home for school doing distance learning. They wanted them in the building, so. You know, we've been balancing this and trying to work with it. I guess I, I just thought getting out ahead is probably better than waiting, but that was just my opinion.
All right, are we ready to, ready to make a motion?
Is the motion going to include any of the exceptions?
Yeah, does anyone want any of the exceptions removed?
I just have one comment. I just wondered, is there anything else that can be done at lunch? I think what I've seen in my work is that that seems to be the space where people are most vulnerable, is when they're eating, because you're feeding. And you're sitting closely to someone and you're talking. And I feel like, I mean, it just feels, because I asked around, like, what's it look like at lunchtime? And they're like, well, we sit by each other and take our masks off. And so to me, it seems like there has to be, and I know there's only so much space, so I totally acknowledge that. Is there a way to like more, make more staggered lunches, to spread kids out so that they know where they can sit that is actually six feet apart? Because in Avera, at least anyway, where all of our employees, but most of our employee exposures have been from eating lunch with others who have been ill.
I'd say when we've been identifying our close contacts, that holds true as well.
Can they eat in their classroom?
Well, even in there, they're going to be closer probably there than they would be in lunch.
Because they're not currently at lunch, they sit at every other seat. And they've got it all spread out throughout the gym too, for the high school lunches.
To the best we can, and you need to understand that times the kids, they want to pack in. I mean, every day you go through and spread them back out. And that's fine, that's part of what we do, but the kids have to want to feel like they're getting something out of the tutor, for an example, you know. Out in the gym, I had to split up because they put six out of the table, you know, and that's jammed as tight as you can get. So we've got it where there's supposed to be a seat in between everybody. But it's, there's.
I think we need to work on that.
I was going to say, to me, that, like, we just have to find a, I don't, if we can, I mean, to me, one seat apart is not enough. I mean, it's not. So like it has to be far enough away to actually be effective. And if we're going to do the masking, I feel like we have to do it as right as we can. I know that there are stipulations to that. So that was just one thing that I thought about, just hearing about from the kids when they talked to me about what it was like, so.
Good input Jill, and you'll work on that Shane?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have to sit down and try to figure out ways to do it better. I agree, that's out of the one place, that's it.
Yep, good. All right, anyone want anything else moved from the mask mandate exceptions?
Now, there's other things that could come up that we're just not aware of and, you know, we'll deal with those as they appear. But I think this is a good list to start with that we know that we'll have to deal with.
So does a public part, is there?
They, the exceptions, no. No one's seen these, I, I wrote them up today, John.
Okay. So do you, you going to talk, somebody going to?
Well, that's what's the motion going to say?
That's what I'm saying.
Include the exceptions or not include any exceptions?
Right.
A date or just until further notice?
So I'll go ahead and read them, is that what you're saying? Okay, on our mask mandate exceptions, students or staff may file an exemption, and that's always been our policy. They must file a doctor's note and/or the consequences of wearing a mask must be significantly, significant to allow the exception. There'll be exception for outdoor recess while eating in the cafeteria. And once they're done eating, they put their masks back on. And that's with the six feet distance that we will work on accommodating more of in the cafeteria. During PE outside and PE inside, but inside only when involved in actual significant physical activity. During extracurricular sport practice and competition, but only when actually participating, mask will be worn while they are on the bench. And to allow employees to not wear the mask when in an enclosed space by themselves or working outdoors by themselves, working alone in an office or in their classroom during prep period. That all seems reasonable to me. Does anyone have any concerns with that? All right, with that being said, our motion will include mandating face coverings.
Until further notice with those valid exceptions.
I, I think you should put in there to be reevaluated as semester time. I think people would like that.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely reevaluate on a timeline. You want semester time?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, yeah, it's always good to keep it on the calendar. And then to accept the mandate exceptions as presented to the board tonight.
And that would include all, all students, staff, visitors and.
All school employees and students, yep.
Spectators.
Yep. Well, yeah, we can't mandate spectators at sporting events, did you just say that?
Yeah.
I don't think we can mandate them, can we? We could encourage it.
Weren't we just told that our game tomorrow night, we have to wear masks to come to it? I'm sure that's what we were told.
I mean, if we're going to mandate our students, I would think we would mandate spectators.
I have no problem personally in doing that.
We always have had a sign on the door, it says recommended.
Yeah, but the problem's going to come when they refuse to wear. That's going to be the problem. I mean, you, you can go tell them, you need to put a mask on, but then when they refuse, what's the next step?
And we know what it is, it's going to be to call law enforcement to create a scene. And we definitely can go that route if we want to.
The other option is to, to, to limit the number of people we allow to come to events. And the, the expectation then would be, we're giving each athlete four tickets, but they need to wear masks or they don't come out. No, I use four as just a number to go on. That, that's going to be the challenge. And if you want us to take that on, we certainly can, but I'm hesitant to see what that's going to end up looking like at some point.
So when we said, do we send anything out when other schools visit us for activities?
We do, I don't know what it says.
Yeah, Mr. Yosin.
Maybe we just say, you know, we've recently made a change of mandate of masks within our.
And how many volleyball are in the whole line?
Two or three.
So we'll have a good, look for advanced tester at it before winter sports kick in.
Craig, do you want to read what you have for the motion?
Mandating mask school-wide with following exceptions, those six things listed on this sheet of paper, to be reevaluated as semester break.
All right. Is that, is that everything, does it cover everything?
I don't have anything in there about.
The way I read it, it's like, mandate masks school-wide, that means.
Right.
Everything.
And I think that is just something that we need to get out in the daily data and maybe a newspaper or whatever somehow to just let them know that we want the public to start wearing masks.
You know, we're asking Eric to do it, I think we need to be like single adults. And, you know, for the common benefit of the community as well, so.
So how does that look for our student athletes that are like stating their masks and stuff like our golf team this week? Do they get out of that bus, not the house? Because right now, we're only mandating on the bus. So in the hotel rooms and the restaurants and at the golfing event themselves?
Yeah.
How does that look?
Yeah, I honestly.
Because we're going to, we're going to have more state events and overnight events and, you know, things like that coming up too for our student athletes.
Well, and I agree, Sharice, I think that we all need to do a better job, you know, ensuring that our kids at every level, whether it's elementary or high school, understand that they have a social responsibility wherever they go to keep that mask on. You know, because you, you're right, you don't want those high schoolers going to these state events and not wearing masks and then coming home and potentially spreading that, you know, to their family. You know, who may not be wearing a mask or grandparents or so forth. So, you know, for the parents that are listening to this, I agree, encourage, explain to your kids the importance of them wearing that mask even when nobody's looking, you know, when it comes to participating in school events. And I think our coaches are trying to do a good job in making sure that they have those masks on. But we can't enforce as a school, you know, what our kids are doing when they're physically not in school. I mean, and I don't know, you know, if they're with the coach 24/7. You know, there might be times when they're coming and going and they're not with that coach. And so if our kids know that they should be wearing a mask, and as a parent, if you're telling your kids you need to have a mask on, you know, hopefully, they're abiding by it, but I don't know Shane, do you?
Well, the, the Abbott quick tests that, that are coming out, we're supposed to get our first ones this week. You know, that could be something. You know, that could be something where, take the golf team as an example. We could, we could test them all before they leave. You know, I, I can, wearing your mask in the car right there, you know, as you're competing, you wouldn't have to wear a mask, but then, you know, if you go back to the motel room with your teammates, I, I wouldn't expect them to sleep in a mask. That's where, where you, if you did a quick test and you had those results before you went out there, uh, that would be one way to, you know, if you know everyone's negative, then, then, then I don't know what else you could do. But we could, could give them those quick tests before they went so that we, we knew that. Takes 15 minutes to 30 minutes to get a result. Yeah, they're effective, about 85%, I think I read, or was told. I've got a meeting tomorrow on it.
Yeah.
There's, there's gonna be, there's gonna be issues.
Well, and they're gonna be around each other without masks on. Um, it's that exposure to other people, you know, because in a sporting event, they're all gonna be around each other without mask at some point. And so it's if they're around the other, especially in golf, because they're moving a lot. Well, not a lot, not very fast, but, you know, it's the
But they're not within six.
Within six feet for 15 minutes consecutively.
They're outdoors.
So hopefully that will keep them safer, you know, and then.
It's school activity, so this should
Yeah.
Be, take, I mean.
Yeah, they should take every precaution.
Well, no, what I mean is, this says schoolwide, and any school activity, then we expect you to have the mask on since exception of
Yep.
These situations.
Yep. And that, again, we have to hold our coaches responsible for that, so. Good point. I'm glad you brought it up, thank you. All right, are we ready to move on?
I need a motion.
One second.
I'll make a motion that we mandate face covering across our school and staff, and then incorporate the exceptions as was presented in tonight's meeting.
Move by McKean and second by Leo, to mandate face covering schoolwide with those six exceptions, to be reevaluated at semester break. Any other discussion? Clear and all, favor say aye.
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 Close same sign. Motion carried.
All right, next on our agenda is considering quarantine recommendation changes. Shane, I'll have you speak on that.
All right, so, uh, Department of Health recommendations are what we've been following. And what that would indicate was if you are a close contact to a positive case, you're put into quarantine for 14 days, and we've been doing that. And that's where the kids are being, and that's where the volume of kids have been placed out of school is because of that close contact. And I know there's, there's kids, you know, uh, uh, four just in this room, parents in this room whose kids have been placed out. And that's not why I'm doing this. What I'm seeing though is, we've got kids sitting at home, working and doing their work the best they can, but I don't know that they need to necessarily be there, um, especially for 14 days. Um, and I realize that's what the Department of Health is, is recommending. But there has been a push statewide, um, from schools of all sizes, uh, to, to change that. And what, what I put together is, um, essentially what Sioux Falls School District is doing. Matter of fact, the language was taken from the Sioux Falls School District, uh, for the most part. We are still, we would still recommend that any close contact, go home for 14 days in quarantine, but it won't be mandatory. We're gonna leave that recommendation to the parent to make that decision. Yes, I'm gonna keep them home, no, we're gonna send them. So, based upon the decision that was just made regarding the masks, it's gonna make things a lot easier in the sense that, it says, in a setting where everyone is wearing face coverings, any asymptomatic student or staff member who has close contact may return to school and then monitor for symptoms and obviously continue wearing masks. So I think what we would do then is we would allow those students, assuming they were in close contact to someone else wearing a mask. Now, we don't, we won't, it'll be hard for us to know that, they're gonna have to tell us that, wherever they, they had that, that contact. To the school, we'll know. If it's outside of school, it's gonna be a lot more difficult, but they'll just have to be honest, or, or tell us, tell us what they want, I guess. They'd come to school and we would monitor them, and we would monitor them regularly with our school nurse. Uh, we would have them check in several times a day, uh, to do a temperature check or other health assessments, whatever, whatever the nurse thinks needs to be done. So we stay regular with them to make sure that no symptoms are beginning to show. That's essentially it. Now, if the close contact, uh, is with someone, either party's not wearing a mask, then we will send them home. So it also encourages wearing masks, not, not only in school, but outside of school. So that's how this was drawn up originally. The extracurricular component, uh, was there as well, so if I'm a close contact, I question, can they still compete in co-curriculars? And I, I think they should be able to, as long as they're wearing a mask. Now, that's not gonna be fun if you're one of those athletes. The option is, is not completely competing at all. I don't think you can let them be a close contact and not wear a mask while they're doing that. I think they need to stay with a mask on. And that won't be real popular among the kids. But again, the alternative is not, not competing during that two-week period. Now, there was a question about what sports do and do not allow it. And we went to, matter, matter of fact, via phone call with the Activity Association, we got those answers. And the only one that we've found so far that does not allow masks to be worn during competition is cheer when stunting is involved. And I suppose if it goes up on your eyes or anything like that, it could cause some issues. Everything else, they are allowed to wear a mask while competing. Did everybody understand what we were, what we were trying to accomplish with this? Trying to keep kids in school. Maybe they shouldn't be in school. I guess I'd, I'd like to hear, what do you guys think about all that?
Yeah, this has been an extremely hard, like, we struggled with this with our healthcare employees, you know, we have an explorer here, how are you doing? I think this is another thing where the targets always been open. The CDC has recommended different things throughout this COVID course, I think. More recently, you know, our, even our, you know, better health and things like that, things have changed. But I would say what you guys have formulated is kind of the current recommendations. And by having the mask, then you're reducing the risk of exposure. We've been doing the same with employees. If you're in a mass situation around someone with COVID, that's an appropriate way, you have to be monitoring closely for symptoms.
Working a low-risk area.
Yep. Yeah, it's a little bit different for, you know, our chemotherapy, long-term care, those things may take you an extra precaution. But I would say the general population, those have been kind of the, the guidance we've been following. And I think that's the current recommendation. The CDC and other organizations make, make changes at any given time, and at that point, maybe these need to be revisited, because that's what we ended up functioning as we're on.
And, and that holds true with our teachers too, they're essential workers. So even though they may be identified as a close contact, they can still come to work. But they have to be masked, they have to be checking for symptoms, and for a sign of any symptom, they need to be out of the building, so.
Question, Shane, how many, do you know how many students we have on quarantine now?
Now?
Do you know how many students we have quarantined now? A lot of them came back today.
Yeah, the third of them come back today. Um, we're sitting right at, I want to say there was 30 some at the most. How many walked in this account?
Well, just roughly 30, I'm just, I'm just thinking about the nurse, being married to a former nurse, trying to keep track of 30 students multiple times a day is gonna be a challenge.
Well, I think we've gotta have some expectation that students will lock down.
Right, right.
You know, see how temperature taken, and if it becomes too much, then we'll have to figure out a different plan.
Right.
But I, I thought that's a good point, contact, that's true.
Absolutely.
But you're right, it could get big, but hope, hopefully it doesn't with.
Right.
And Shane, that was one of the inputs that, on that sheet that I gave you, that I kinda did reference in there, that they need to self-monitor. You know, have that responsibility if they had that contact, was to self-monitor as well as the nurse doing, you know, their checks, that's later on in that handout that we had.
No, I, I definitely think the nurse should be involved in it.
Definitely.
Minimum of once a day, but just, uh,
You're right.
As much as possible, but if the numbers get really high, I think it's
Right, if 30 of them, you gotta go in four times a day, it's.
Right.
Yep.
It would be tough. I, I do have a question for the, the medical staff here. Mark, is the temperature a common symptom anymore?
Great question. It's not a majority by any means, um, it's one of the CDC guideline criteria. I would say everywhere, I've been with that temperature screening. The nice thing is, it's one of the very few objective findings, but everything else is, you know, some kind of, someone can hide a sore throat, uh, they can hide body aches. Fever is something that we can check. So I think that's why we kind of fixate on that, it's something we can check, we can trend. Someone has a fever, we can look into why. Everything else you can kind of hide, and I think, you know, that's why we tested it, followed it for the most part, but not everyone with COVID has the same symptoms at all. Some people have just loss of taste or smell, some people just have nausea. I think this year, you know, another really important thing for both students, staff, everybody is, we used to always put an emphasis on being tough, you know, you don't miss school days, you don't stay home from work. Like, this year, there has to be an emphasis on transparency, and if you truly feel unwell, we need to get you seen, we need to get you tested, we need to be cognizant of everyone else around, instead of just, I'm just toughing it out with this cough or this sore throat and things like that. Students, you know, I think, this fever, perfect, no. But it's one of the few things you can object and detest.
That might be another good use for those rapid tests too, with those, uh, close contacts.
You know, doctor, I've heard recently that a lot of the sinus symptoms are masked, you know, and they're presenting COVID, you know, from them. Is there something in that whole mix that kind of might help somebody differentiate between you having sinuses or COVID?
I struggle with this every single day. I have no, I mean, everyone is just totally different. You can, some people that are, you know, the hard part is the other stuff that always happened this time here doesn't go. People still get a fever, they still get sinus infections. You still have people that have asthma exacerbations and COPD and start to cough and things from that. So wading through, trying to differentiate, which is something that we are struggling with on a daily basis. The hard part is you end up in our line of work, you just, you have to test COVID because you don't have another way to prevent it. No, I'm trying to take population help. You know, when you start thinking school, I think you kind of go a certain way, whether that's the rapid tests or at least by wearing masks, you're decreasing that risk of transmission if someone kind of leaks through the cracks and is in school with COVID for a while, but it's a totally moving target that's great, it's gonna be, just don't have to worry.
Thank you. All right, um, are there any other comments or questions from our guests?
Well, I work for the Sioux Falls School District, so I can share how it's been going for the first week. We do have temperature checks for the kids that are in, or would have been quarantined. And, um, there's that very few of them that have had to leave for symptoms, so that's positive. We, um, and the Sioux Falls School District chose to not make face coverings mandatory for activities because we did not believe that there would be students that were within six feet for more than 15 minutes during that, during the practice. So we did not believe that there would be a school here in that way. So, um, just one way that that differentiated. I do think from a lens of someone who is very concerned about gaps in student learning, that kids being in for 14 days and could be going on their second round of having to miss school for 14 days is a significant concern for any student, not just those that you're going for, for all students.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, well, we will open the floor from the board on taking a motion to, um, consider the quarantine recommendation changes as presented.
Where are these listed at? What part of this is the actual?
In the handout.
Just the bullets? On the last two pages?
I think that, and that sentence above it where the school district recommends that any close contact should quarantine.
Yeah, halfway from that second page.
And then those next two bullets, right?
Yep.
Okay. What about the last one, that?
I think that should be included as well.
Okay.
And I think coaches need it, pertains to them as well.
Yeah, I guess this may be back to the previous motion too, but it's actually really then for both of those?
Yeah, we're probably gonna have to give them a day to get situated, but yeah, as soon as we can implement this.
What did you ask?
As soon as we can implement it, which Michael next to you.
Do I need to read it? Should I read it out loud, or? Okay, you'll publish it?
Yeah, it's on the website already.
All right, it's already on the website? All right, so I need to, I'm gonna open it up for a motion? Jim Mahoney and Matt Lashner.
Oh, I see, so we got some kids at home.
So implemented. Following changes and then those bullets, right?
I'm sorry.
Which, the motion should say what, to implement the follow, the following changes, then list those bullets?
Yep, the proposed changes, yep. And if this is effective, then we do have students at home that if they fall under those criteria, possibly could come back. Mr. Norde, did you hear that?
Sorry.
So we have students that are currently being quarantined at home that may be affected by this change?
Right, yeah, tomorrow morning, I'm gonna have to make a bunch of phone calls and find out exactly the criteria that we have our different students in, and then, uh, I'll be contacting parents. So I would say tomorrow, I think, would be too early to guarantee that I could get anybody back in if, if they were to meet this criteria, but for sure, by the end of the day, I'll have contacted everyone to let them know.
But some, some won't have.
No, I, I'm guessing the majority, it probably won't affect, but I, that's, that's as much a guess as anything, so I may be completely wrong on that, but I, I know there's at least one or two that probably.
Thank you.
Yep.
So move by Mahoney, second by Lashner, and then following changes to the student quarantine procedure, then those bullets there. Any other discussion? Clear and all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carried.
All right, other? Anything else anyone needs to discuss today?
The only thing I wanted to draw attention to was just that students understand, as always, that if they have a concern, they are able to say it. I, you know, thus far, students have mostly not been wearing masks, so now that everybody's gonna be required to, and there may be some who choose not to, or they have an exemption or whatever, to make sure that the students know that they just need to speak to the teacher and that they can be moved, or just so that the kids know that they have an option.
To social distance.
Yeah, I just don't want them to, you know, be pulled from school, not realizing I could have been moved and not known that, or just to draw attention to that to the kids, so they know.
One of those, isn't it?
It says right here, what happens if my student is wearing a mask, but others refuse?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think you, Mr. Norde's had those conversations with them already, right?
About wearing masks and.
And moving if you needed to move.
Yeah, we've had to, I've made an all-call kind of a deal and explained it, plus I've talked to them at lunch multiple times about, if you are comfortable where you're at, please ask the staff, I've talked to the staff members about it twice now. And they have been completely willing to, you know, help them move around. We understand that sometimes they might be shoved way up against the front wall for a little while, so they have to move back to be able to see the board while they do something, but then they can move back and we, we've become much more mobile in the classroom, I guess would be a good way of putting it, but yes, we have had those discussions.
And then if a student comes back and has to wear a mask, who monitors that to make sure that's done? Because I'm just thinking of like sports, for example. If they're not all wearing a mask, but one or two have to, I'm just thinking out loud, it's just some things that came to my mind. It's like, whose job is it to manage that?
The coach will have to.
Say that again?
The coach will have to.
Yeah, okay. Just so that they know that that's their responsibility, and like, I know that these two kids have to wear masks for a full week, so that they're following through with that, and that most kids are gonna do that. I'm not, you know, our, we have good kids, so they're gonna follow those, but.
And they need to understand, the kids that are not wearing masks, that, you know, if they come down with COVID, then they're quarantining their friends.
Yeah.
You know, and so if it's a medical reason, that's understandable. You know, they probably should be wearing one, I mean, unless they physically cannot. should be wearing one. I mean, unless they physically cannot. But, you know, if it's just because they don't want to, you know, they, there will be consequences, but it'll be for the people that they happen to be around, because they will end up quarantining. And hopefully they're not seniors to miss their senior year.
Shane, are you gonna let Rodney know what we kind of did here tonight?
Yeah, yeah. He's, he's already seen it. And he's already, he said there's a lot of schools doing it, and he thought it's a very good proposal, yes. So legal counsel's already signed off on it.
All right, is there anything else we need to discuss? I know we have a board meeting on Monday next week, a normal board meeting. All right, if not, I will declare it. I, I would, we will entertain a motion to close, to adjourn the meeting. It is 7:43.
So? Move by Paul, seven eight, go to 7:43. Any other discussion? If there are none, all favor say aye.
Aye.